Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your continued blessings. We have so much to thank you for and we can never say thank you often enough. Place your hands upon us as we go about the business of the town. Guide us and show us your will and what you would have us do. Pray in the precious holy name of our risen Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, our cycle, so I'll see mission statement. To advance a great work, our success through balanced governance, united partnerships, and engaged commitment. If Mr. Soller, if you live inside our business. All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Motion. Motion second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign it pass. All right. Motion in a second. Any discussion or anything? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed like sign it. So we'll move on to the public here, open the public here. This is a continuation of previous.
And Mayor Pro Jim, page 76 of your agenda topic. That is a fine update. I'm just give us background and go through some things that changed. Uh, new recommendations for the board to consider as a thing. Review this conditional zone. Vice Colonel Horton proposes a reason on seven point five nine two acres from agricultural residential to highway commercial condition. The proposed uses are motor vehicle, repair maintenance, painting, bodywork, front business garage, truck parking, exterior truck, art storage, automobile graveyard, junkyard, and salvage yard. Property located 146. You will flip through your packets with me and I'll flip over to page 58. So just really quickly. And just try to share with me each stuff on page 58. Under impact on land owners number two. Our operations were seven days a week, 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Further talks with the owner. Uh, that's typical, that's a typical schedule. But this may be a 24-hour a day business. Uh, where trucks might be out at night. Uh, in the middle of the night, have to be repaired and painted or repaired. So when you did, what were about that? 24 hours, but there's a possible full-time operation. Skip over page 59. There was some discussion about minimum plant sizes at the time of playing. This is what's in the ordinance. Uh, you know, it's just basically I want to share that large tree has to be one inch caliper in size. Measure your calipers, uh, measurements should be taken six inches above ground. Um, so you large trees are one inch, small trees are three quarter inch. Multi-stem trees like Craig Merle have to be four, happy to already made an account for them. So measure the height. If the desire of the board would be to have a larger tree planted, we probably have to come into form of addition for the board, uh, to increase that size of, that'd be, that's what staff has got the. All right, flip over to page 61. The planning board looking down again, uh, next Monday night, April 11. And recommended approval with the new listed conditions that are provided on page 62. So that's, that's a new recommendation with the, uh, conditions that were signed by the. Additional information that was discussed in the planning board wanted to update more about that. Apple is no longer pursuing a wash station on so far. That's, that's new concern about the size of the required trees and the kind of playing. Playing word also had a discussion about that. And also concerned about the long-term maintenance of trees, especially these from little size. Uh, page 62, uh, I won't repeat it, our operation there have been updated, included at 24 hours a day. And for landscaping on page 63, letter Z. Uh, install tall evergreen trees staggered planted and with branches touching the ground along Silkup Road, along that boundary, along the southern part property down there, there's a house on the southern side. It will be parallel with US 64. And then this is new, the eastern boundary shared with the Chatham water garden. And what be included with this, uh, tree buffer? If it will be within a minimum two foot of the backyard, so backyard is set aside just for landscaping. Trees planted eight feet apart on the diagonal planting in two rows. That's the staggered planning scheme or a little more description. Existing vegetation that meet or exceeds above standards may remain. And all new planning shall meet the minimum standards set forth in our landscaping section. Lastly, both DB and CC. We have new install a six-foot tall opaque fence and gates along the western and southern boundaries of the salvage yard area. We're looking at just to say, let's hold that thought. And lastly, this was something that was agreed upon within six days of approval. We're talking about disapproval. Remove all trash in the property and all items from the devastated. All right. If you really look over page 65, let's pick up what we talked about, um, the salvage yard area. And you're on your map on page 65. Yeah, from the label, the salvage yard area, uh, to the rear of the property, the, uh, east of the, uh, existing buildings. And you can tell there's a, uh, illustrated a fence along the, um, the western side of the salvage area and the southern side. Yeah, the western and southern, down the other side of the area would have a, uh, opaque and six feet tall with opaque gates.
Is that what they're monitoring with the X's and O's?
Yeah, that's a typical, uh, those types of requirements. Okay. Lastly, uh, we want to flip real deep in the back there on page 96. Um, we received one other comment from the public. It's a letter dated March 14th. I'm not going to get into it, just getting initial information uh, about, uh, the work that's happening and direction that, uh, this, this person sent it. And then, uh, on the backside of that is a, um, an email. Is what?
Is that the same person?
Is. Matter of fact, page 97 is the new comments. 96, I think it was comments that was previously shared at the last meeting. So I apologize, 97, page 97 is an email of an update from that, uh, that owners shared several comments with. Repro team, um, last thing I want to share is, uh, the board has to uh, reach out to economic development teams. And we give that, we, uh, reach out to Philip Pappas, um, Triangle J, Academy E C. And let them know what we're working on with, uh, this, this project. Any assistance that can be provided to a, uh, business owner. Welcome, again, again, the Apple's contact information. I hadn't heard anything, so I don't, I haven't been updated about that, but that was, staff did reach out as soon as possible. Um, the first team, that concludes my presentation. Uh, if, if the board moves forward, closes the public here, I'll make a decision tonight. There's a worksheet. Page 12. And if I have some questions.
Yeah. Bryce Carroll, real important, you signed it. Anything that went back to see it before. Yeah, yeah, I just take you to talk, I even have you there. All right. What's comments from the board?
You just want, so, um, I know we, I noticed that in, we're no longer pursuing a wash station. Uh, we still have that on the, uh, you know, on the proposed site map. So is that, that is, that's not going to be? Okay. Okay.
And I'll just let Bryce, first.
Please. Oh, me. One, one thing that seemed to be the general consensus of our last meeting that we had on this was that, number one, we wanted to, we want to see that support succeeds in it. And we didn't want to put something in play that is impossible for him to be. And that, uh, owner was going to work closely with Jack and start working on some of these things. It's a good thing, yeah, whatever you want to call it. So Jack, can you give us any update or how that's coming along?
Bro, I know that, uh, Mr. Horton told me he was doing some things for, something things around with it. Start with that, so. Uh, he's obviously attempted to contact you years, uh, start that work. So he's, he's created, he met with me after we had our last meeting and we went through these conditions together. And, uh, I note that he's, he was supportive of. He came up and died his death, you know, he sent me a heat list in the packet that has a list of things we just needed to do. And we just made a bunch of words into our condition list. Yeah, it was, uh, the board process, we've worked with it, we always do, see to the end, uh, to have a successful business.
I think that's, that was one of the main things I was looking at. Making sure that whatever happened was that, um, it would help him to be successful and being able to get to where he needed to be. So that he could reach an approval. Um, and just looking at some of the things that here it seems like and, and missing what you're saying, it seems like, uh, there's that working relationship there, which is what, what needs to happen.
What are the changes to, I want to just ask you a question for you. You'll be in charge of it. With the changes we've got on there, there's a lot of work to be done there. And I know you're a busy fellow, you got stuff all over the place. Do you, do you feel like if this is going to be something that, uh, you'll be able to, uh, do without putting you under undue stress? And because there are some time limits on there. Think you'll be able to do that without causing any more problems with yourself and your business?
Uh, I got pretty much the stuff you got in your bucket, two more than anything. And, uh, the most hardest time.
Yeah.
About $17,000. For, that's the very minimum me and Jack will hope. Um, I have the tree. All that priced out, that would be the problem. The fence, most cost thing. Right now, you know, with things over fuel and all this and that. Hard right now, but, uh, I don't know how some will be or the fall. Best I can is all I can say. I'm not going to be worried about a fence, but he's trying to keep him a bit aside. The fighting fuel and insurance and all. I understand it, that's the, you know, most important of the, the, the looks. Am I do a little here or there? I don't know, he's not bad.
And Jack, this, I reckon this would be a question for you is, with all these things to get done, if for some reason it got down to getting short on the deadline and Mr. Horton's making progress or is now be able to complete it or somehow, how rigid are we going to have to be or we, or we have some flexibility to be able to work, Mr. Horton, even though we get past what 60 days or whatever it is?
The, um, conditions are, they're pretty much in summer. So if there are changes to this conditions, we have to come back to the board, change.
What about just the extension of conduct?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's probably geared into the condition, what I would recommend. Uh, now as far as the long term of this approval, not just that, that, that's one time, I mean, it's six days on. Remember thinking about her playing up. Uh, number two would be the expiration of the approval that the board's issuing. This kind of time will, and it's got some triggers and things that can help prolong it. And if we're nothing, obviously you can get to that time limit pretty fast. But doing some work, spending some money, they were just recognizing that little bit. His plans and extension work, so it need to be steady, you know, I think that's the best case scenario is if you, you drop off and don't do anything for a couple of years. They have a problem.
But it doesn't sound like he's looking at a couple of years. Looking at trying to get it, filling this as soon as he can within the constraints that plenty and all of that with all the, the, the economic things that's happening right now. Am I correct?
Trees and moving things out of the book. Most of the stuff I can do myself. Coming by and seeing order material.
I do have a price. And I gotta let you know what you can do.
I know sometimes too, with, with the way things are, getting supplies is hard as well. So you have to take into consideration that, you know, if there are, looking at what supplies can come in, but when they come in, I guess that, that would be it, when they come in.
But I, I would think if we're going to, say, on some sort of just, we say, and pray to come back to the board for request of amendment, extension work.
We got, we got tons of files we're going to scan. Oh, yeah. Oh, that, oh, that was building on Dogwood, uh, we sent him a few times.
So it sounds like we're starting to get a consensus here that we want to work with Mr. Horton. But we also oh, we need to give some additional time to get to it, while there's progress. And they have the best way to go about it, Jack.
I just let, I just let him work the job.
Yeah, you're ringing back to me.
Looks like you've got something to say. We.
I was, sorry about that. I was just mentioning Jack, uh, to recall that his public hearing, I wouldn't be one signed up, but.
Just Jack and Mr. Bolton, that's all. The. How do we need, I'm saying.
I would, I would also, I would recommend that we strike item W because that's relating to the wash water. And since it's not going to have a wash water, then there's no need to have that in the conditions. On page, on page 63, I'm sorry, page 63 of the package. I, um, line W, wash water from washing trucks and trailers. But, yeah, I'll just track that out.
It's the same.
Yeah. I would see if anybody else wants to speak for both. Anybody else who wants to speak on this matter before we close the public here? Nope, not the closing of the game. All right, well, pleasures of all.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt the amendment and approve the action as consistent with the adopted 11 team because, uh, I'm trying to make this easy on you. Because of reasons one, two, three B on page 56. E and E on page 57. And approve the amendment as reasonable because of reasons K or and T on page 57. Right there. You forget that?
Yes, I think so.
I try to make it as easy for you as possible.
Is that the condition there's a, I mean, yeah.
And that the, uh, conditions on page 62 and 63 of those, the, uh, this approval, the contingent on those conditional zoning conditions, uh, conditions that may be incorporated in the motion. Those are conditions. A through double C, page 62 and 63 minus. Sir. Thank you, Chair.
Got a motion, yeah, second, any further discussion? All right, we're going to vote, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed like sign it. And the motion.
Uh, yeah, question.
Are you?
I mean, this is something I've found with the, you know. Oh, I don't want to put a stipulation stuff on him. Now, folks, when they want. When y'all do that, when he kind of ripping on cars and stuff down there. Are we going to anything like that when we sit in the living room? Feel that space up a little bit, a junkyard down there.
There is, uh, most people are there, we use, um, finding. Doesn't have any separate youth regulations associated with, and so, um, not having.
You don't have anything. I only, oh, that may, yeah, look terrible down there. And while I have something, you want to tell me another.
I can, I can look into it and let the planning board, if you would like. Board would like us to do it, we can do that.
I mean, you know, it's not like we, yes, he had and adding, right, that's close to the room right now. Come up with all that stuff.
And it's been a while.
It was here for a while. But what caused that longer time? It's, it's, it's America. All the time he had, put up fences and stuff to, uh, to buy his plant, I thought he needed to get that down, they got to be fast.
And so, and you sent an email, I've got to respond to it. Um, and it's good time to talk about it. I think you sent an email a while back asking for our responses or propose, uh, project for old 421. When we're going to try to make all for sure, we're appropriate for current use of product. So maybe this, we can kind of work all that together. It goes down through there, right?
It would stop at the intersection where you, uh, turn off to go to St. Ray Park on Second Avenue. It's right in the territory that.
It's a little bit further, but it's, but.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, I'll give that, I'll give the question here.
The answer question. You go look into that, Jack.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Next, we'll open the. Game. Oh. What is this, Jack?
Yeah, the first one we've done, uh, for Jim, um, my package. Related to access to lots, overflow parking. Uh, staff is being especially with property developers, you'll see that over the next, uh, 34 hours, we'll go real quick. And, and this item was in especially the Chatham Habitat community. Took that discussion to the planning board. And they discussed it and then initiated the minutes for us to put together and what is what you, which is what is in front of the board. All right. When it more recommended approval on April 11. Uh, what we're, what we're talking about is on page 113, uh, admitting our section order to raise access lots. Uh, the, the new ad addition, and I'm going to just read, you know, talking to you about why. Access to overflow parking lots that contain 10 or less parking spaces are not required to connect directly to streets that are paid and constructed to either state pound construction standards and approved by state certified engineers and state no killer. All access roads shall meet the minimum standard, working on a target. So if you'll bear with me, um, we'll just go ahead and talk about the definition then we'll talk about proposal. On page 116, overflow parking, providing the definition. Off street parking does not exist on a minimum parking requirement. Parking area used in primary parking lot is full. So it gives us a definition of overflow parking. And we've got a section ordinance that you, overflow parking lots don't have to access a, a road. All right. Hat Pat is proposing development on Pratt Lane, which is, uh, just north of the former cotton mill of the North Chatham Avenue. And, um, they're going to provide, it's going to be a townhouse development. Each, uh, each home is going to have two parking spaces at their front. The front of the locations that have parking spaces for, for each unit. But they wanted to buy some overflow parking for guests. Maybe someone's got an extra vehicle, but didn't want to, um, pay those lots. And one of the parking lots is going to access a, uh, street that is not paid per town standard. And the planning board felt this would be a, a central tradition. You landed on 10 parking spaces that overflow parking lot could access onto a gravel. But, uh, which is, um, what you see coming off of Pratt Lane.
Is the other one, the parking lot be gravel?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's better anyway. As far as storm work.
Sure, well, they're both considered impurges.
Okay.
The way they would be designed and packed.
Okay.
But, um, if you look at page 120, I can probably explain the reason for this amendment. Uh, Craft and Craven intersect with each other. And Craven, you can use, uh, the way it's for the rubber tracks. That is a gravel drive line, and that's where this proposed overflow parking lot is going to access onto. And so it's, um.
Is it going to be a parcel of 83216 that we're.
That's, that's where the town hall development is going to be.
And where is the overflow going to be?
It, it's going to be close to the intersection of Pratt Lane and Craven Street. In that general corner there.
Okay.
But it would, that Craven Street extension, uh, is where the overflow park is going to, uh, access onto.
Is it, um, are those lines for the lot, they're a little off? Or should we move on to that? 120? And it looks like Craven Street's on 70750. So how does it go on? Of 83216 going to access it? Was, and you asked it off?
Yeah, I wouldn't trust the IIs for sure, but, uh, there is a gravel road. Craven Street's paid until you get to Crack Lane. And then if you continue on Craven Street, it's gravel. And that's the best portion, uh, that this proposed gravel parking lot is going to be on.
The gravel port is not an exclusive easement to 70750?
It is, it's an easement for, where it's ownership to 70750. And it's an easement to 7067. And, and, and the, and to it.
Is it an easement to 83216?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And, um, this board about the fire code, that means everything.
Well, we'll let the fire marshal and the fire chief, uh, to the town see that. We want that not to be forgotten, that the fire code always applies.
Okay.
Right, multiple asks is, are any of those, any of the other gravel road, they will have to be wide and maintained or?
No, it's up to them. That's part of that fire code, they have to be a certain width, they got to hold a certain, uh, load, like seventy thousand pounds. So they had to be built correctly. It just had not.
If I'm not, I was talking with, um, Curtis earlier. I know those roads are small. Just back there. So I know this, they're gonna have to be widened.
Um, two things to respond to that. One, our ordinance currently allows an exception for this size development to not have to pay. And, um, during that discussion, we had with the planning board, uh, we started another amendment to address that even for smaller developments. Uh, and the attempt is to, and this is to come back to the board for, planning board to approve that. I mean, is that sometimes the roads are too small. And no matter how small the development, the road probably needs to have some sort of, the building of the planning board needs to have some minimum standard. And, uh, yeah, Craven Street's about thirteen feet five.
Then that, that's not a town main, that section of Craven Street is not town maintained.
The gravel section, yeah, is not.
Okay. Is it supposed to though? Is it supposed to be maintained by town? That's, that's an unneeded.
It's gonna be, as of, as of this development will come out, it will still be fine.
Yeah. General, um, is one nineteen, that's the corresponding flat twenty-two oh one seventy. So the, uh, lot that we're looking at is lot two, and then a little triangle next to it. That's, that's eight, three, two, one, six?
Yeah. That's lot two.
So it has a forty foot, uh, property. Uh, on that Craven Street extension. Corner of the flat. So I'm assuming there's some type of, um, maintenance agreement between the owners of lots one, two, and three, or is there not? Although.
There is, and it's recorded.
There is not?
There is, and it is a recorded, um, agreement.
So then I think, you know, that would probably carry the day on that, because they have to maintain the maintenance agreement. Maintain the forty foot wide was now a risk ground. I'm sure there's a cost split in there.
These, um, gravel parkings, they propose gravel, or overflow, whatever you want to call it. That's gonna be gravel there, and it will, it will be have some kind of boundary. It's where it can be maintained. And those lots can be maintained by the owner.
Part of that, uh, what we believe to be a homeowner association.
Yeah, I was really asked about that, because most times Habitat houses are owned by the individual. So what, what, what will be in place to future maintenance down the road?
Mayor Precious, I'm, I'm sorry. Is Mr. Harmon signed up for the public hearing to teach answering questions? Can, can, can he give his name and address from the record, please?
I'll put your name down, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, uh, what kind of, how will that be structured so the maintenance can be done going forward with these units?
So Habitat has a number of neighborhoods that already have HOAs. For example, Westmont and So, um, they have community spaces there that are maintained by the, um, association. Of course Habitat provides oversight and support. Which way makes the decision. So to have that, you know, is sort of a backup support system also. But yes, we have several communities that have HOAs. And then we have a staff person that works specifically as part of their meeting.
Any other question? Or, well, he's up for you.
What you're doing for our community?
Yes, and thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you, Barb. Appreciate that. Other question? All right. Anything else? Any closing? As far as the key? All right, what's the wishes of the board?
I'm making a motion that the board commissioners adopt the amended proof that the action is consistent with adopted land development plan also. Page one eleven, number one, number two. And to prove that proposing amendment is reasonable cause of, uh, item number three, modified development ordinances to be more user friendly.
The motion in the second, any further discussion? All those favorite seats, I'm not saying aye. Those opposed like so. And the motion is here. Nice. Yeah. Move on to the next vote. Okay?
Mr. Mayor Precious, uh, this one starts on page one twenty-two. You can get a minute subdivision other exception. Proposed amendments were first discussed upon town staff, the Chatham Habitat community, and the planning board initiated this amendment on April four. Planning board recommended the, uh, amendment on April eleventh, last Monday. And on page one twenty-four is our proposed amendment. I'm not saying government on Pratt. And, uh, when we started looking at the, the proposal, we identified thirteen lots, which would be twelve, proposed, uh, town hall lots, and the remaining track. And we're gonna want to re-identify that as another lot. All right. So, which would be thirteen. And that would trigger some other things. Road improvements, art recreation, open space, those are all extensions in our rules. And so we looked into it, uh, was it, uh, to, to plan more discussing, plan more fault, well, let's omit that. Open space law, and I'll read the sort of thing with all, a little more about it. If the remaining portion of the parent track is open space, stormwater facilities, et cetera. And the remaining portion of the parent track is in shared ownership with a home slash property owner association, then the remaining portion of the parent track is not considered a lot. The remaining portion of the parent track shall not be allowed to be developed as a building lot unless all exceptions are satisfied and in full compliance with the town's ED.
Set up to back down twelve.
Right. They consider it to be thirteen, it's still twelve. And we provided an illustration to show you that again. So the open space is that, um, gravel parking area, proposed, uh, water quality, stormwater facilities, uh, general common air, open space, the convenience development. Uh, would not be considered a lot and would be done on a twelve lot.
And, as I understand it, if they decide to sell that thing, but somebody else in these, you revert back to what I'm currently, you have to do.
That was that last sentence, the planning board asked you to add against. The remaining portion of the parent track shall not be allowed to be developed as a building lot unless all the exceptions are satisfied. You got to come back and, um, on road and correct facility, you may, whatever it is. Whatever it is, all this. That's it for that. And that goes, uh, we initially will look at it as a minor subdivision, uh, exception. The thought, why not use this for all of our sort of, you know, have majors and others that the open space will be changed.
Any further questions, Jack?
Uh, both, uh, here. What is, we, the board, I'm making a motion, the board commissioners adopt the amendment to prove the action is consistent with the adopted land development plan. Because the men, it demands ordinances needed to accommodate uses or situations that arise and are not solely covered by existing ordinances. And prove that proposed amendment is reasonable because it modifies the development ordinances, the more user friendly we're possible.
Not again?
Have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Not all those favorite seats, I'm not saying aye. All those opposed like so. Motion, carry. All right. Open the next. So we're here, five point four.
Four, three, four, five, two.
Three, okay, three. Five, four, three.
Are you there? Yeah, the beauty of amendment, manufactured home park definition. This proposed amendment was first discussed between town staff and map manufacturer home park owner. The planning board initiated amendment at March fourteenth meeting and approved it on April eleventh. So let's move straight to page, uh, one thirty-one. We're only talking about many definitions for manufactured home park. It reads, a parcel or continuous parcel of land that contains two or more manufactured homes. So that means, um, no other types of homes are allowed in manufactured homes. But we talked about the growing opportunity of affordable housing and, and be a little more flexible and allowing state building code structures. Uh, tiny home could be a, uh, would be a manufactured home approved by HUD, being one that was built on site, it meets the state grid code, which is a higher standard, construction standard than HUD standard. That are built product. Uh, also margin, a lot of those are built in the factories, but they need to stay during that. So what we're adding to this definition is simple. Uh, and also may include homes that are constructed with the standard set forth in the North Carolina building code. Uh, open some doors for manufactured home parks to allow them to have both approved homes and big buildings as the developers wish. Um, and to complete some smaller ground floor, with some smaller homes that need to be moved to. It couldn't cheaper than a, a single line or a double line. Uh, unapproved, you know, factory door home, so. Um, staff feel comfortable with the discussion, the planning board obviously did. And that's what we are considering for Tim. So, um, I don't have much more to offer, and Brad, it's a pretty simple definition change. And we're gonna, what you don't really worry.
Any questions from the board? Without Tim.
Anyone sign up for phone call? You all sign up for this one, bud?
No, sure. Mike, one of the workers I talked to. Here, Precious. You want to speak?
They lock in.
Give your name and your address.
Uh, my justice, I did. That property is obviously. I've talked to y'all before, I was stressing, you know, for some kind of housing. It's obviously, like, called all the time. It's, it's crazy right now. I, yeah, rentals available right now, I'd be in there one month. My turn, because mobile halls are so usual, they're hard to come by, new ones are outdated and problems.
Monica, can you even get single ones in?
Yeah.
You can't get.
Get single wise. Mr. Precious just came in.
I didn't know if you could even get single wise anymore.
You can't get them, but they're hard to come out of there, Rick. I mean, basic housing is single wise up there now. Pretty, any alternatives? Houses, I know we talked, I talked about RV, allowing RVs. Just for the home parks. You'll call for that, and the tiny houses, you know, they prove you're the kind of homes that's falling. I don't know if anybody lived with one of the three bedroom, two thousand square foot house in a little home park.
Hey, you want, hey, you gonna sign? I don't know.
We're gonna keep your name and your address, please.
On the six, twenty-two, nine, Scott R. Road, lady. Uh, we're in a manufactured home, by, by the home, and a lot of that. Processed single line. Double, that was. And it's become all too far recent for the only person. It's not new to have a fifty-five thousand dollar single line now. That's, that's not even set up on the time. But, um, if it was possible to have some RVs, I think it would help the housing situation. Cause that isn't affordable now. And in fact, don't used to be affordable down for them all. So, you know, it's more to consider, RVs and manufactured home park. I think it'd be a benefit.
It doesn't have anything to do with RVs, does it, yeah?
This is maybe.
It does not.
But I will, uh, say that the town board asked me to, I'm looking in that, to get, to get that conversation from the planning board last Monday night and working on that, with some, uh, some ideas for the planning board.
Yes. Yeah.
How about RVs?
Mr. Justice, can you push the button on the mic, please, sir? Thank you.
Hello there.
You all good?
Yes. Thank you. I have that effect on people.
Yeah, what are we talking about? RVs. Tiny houses. I can call all the time. Next one. I'll, we got it. Make aside. There's gonna be two to three thousand more people coming and stuff. Or that they're gonna be doing good. It's gonna be that. Make aside how much you want. We have to stop.
Any other question? The board? All right. No more questions. Notice, other key?
For the force measures, now the amendment improve the action is consistent with the property thing. Cause the L B C recommends many ordinances as needed to accommodate future situations that arise. Now, clearly covered by existing ordinances and also recommend many ordinances as needed to address changes in physical, social, environmental circumstances and making visiting regulations unnecessary, outdated, obsolete. And prove the proposed amendment as reasonable because they'll be paying, that some further recommends modifying development ordinances for future present.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? But all those in favor, speaking, I'm not saying aye. All those opposed like so. And the motion here. Yeah. Look, this, this is five point four.
Mr. Mayor Precious, Tim, you're in a claim development. Page one thirty-four. Proposed amendments were first discussed upon town staff, the developer of the proposed claim development. Planning board initiated amendment on March fourteenth and approved it on April eleventh. On page one thirty-five, this is a simple change, um, sort of significant. It's a tendency, uh, intent disorder to adopt in nineteen ninety-three. Same language in there at that point in time. Um, and purpose of this section, it says the purpose and intent of this provision is ensure that the claim development procedures not used intentionally or unintentionally to create non-residential uses in areas generally zone for residential. Except as part of the, uh, uh, To create non-residential uses in areas generally zone for residential, except as part of the, of, well, plan primary residential zone. So, the way it was set up was that the developer has to complete eighty percent of the residential portions of the claim development. Claim development is a mixture, you know, where you've got residential, commercial, office, maybe even manufactured homes. They want you to do the residential concept front, and then you can enjoy putting in the non-residential for commercial. All the couple developers that are interested in these, and we moved in a couple ordinances, and didn't find any thinking system. But I do know that the developer was committed to providing twenty percent of the residential, and then they could get started on others. So, we changed out, may not be occupied until eighty percent, we made it to twenty. And that, that seemed to be more consistent with what we found in other areas and desires of the building. So, I do have, I think a person on, on the screen, if you have any questions, that's representing one of the owners, having a team actually. A good summit, an engineering design firm. I'm glad to answer your question, Mayor Clark Tim, that concludes the discussion on this amendment. If you don't page one thirty-nine. She's actually made this, made this. I think it's probably here to listen, but if you've got any good questions for us, or I can write some to them.
Questions for the Board?
Some jurisdictions try to allow this flexibility, they decided during the public hearing and as a condition, I think. I think the developer had some staying, so when they got there, they wouldn't be thinking they were gonna have to jump. More, you know, do more than they expect, so. Fair number, seeing we support it by this.
Further question? Close, close key. Most missions to the Board.
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners adopt the amendment, approve the actions consistently adopted LDB. Because men's ordinances as needed to address changes in physical, social, or environmental circumstances, and make existing regulations unnecessary, outdated, or obsolete. And approve, and approve the proposed amendment that's reasonable, is it modifies the development ordinances to be more user-friendly where possible.
Alright, we have a second. Need further discussion? Not all those favorites seen above, I say aye. All those opposed like aye. Motion key. Alright. Close, other key. Alright, old business. We have none. Wow. Alright, you business. Have none of that. Short on business.
First of all, we're talking about something going on at the Town Hall. A little update on that. We had a meeting on April fifth with the architect and contractor. It looks like June first is the new closing, or end of the project. And I'm learning a lot about this project, it started, I guess, last May. But there's, there's fifteen change orders, which has affected that end date. The end date, I guess the original ended February seventeen. But each one of those, change orders has moved to the finish line. I will say this, I had been here two weeks on April fifth, and I had not seen one worker. And I said that to the contractor, I didn't get a real good answer why he had not been there in that time. Because, you know, you can work inside, you know, with the, I know, you have some outside work, too. But they haven't missed a day since. I guess it's a good thing. We'll be watching that, the new end date is June first, so we're, we're happy about that. One of the, one of the issues has been the HPAC suppliers and the equipment stuff they need for it. And I guess that's still, I don't know, up in the, signage is six week out. So, we have to do the signage now, because, you know, you have to ask signage up. So, we're gonna have to order that, I guess, in the next day or so. Any questions on, on the construction? The second thing I want to talk about is two positions that we're looking to hire. First, obviously, the clerk, town clerk, and then we have the county operations manager. And talking with the new manager, he really wants to play a strong part in the hiring of both of those positions. One of the, one of the issues with the town clerk is, our town, our current town clerk, in a couple days, but. Does a lot of things that aren't really town clerk jobs, like a lot of the budget and other things might be. And so, to put out a job, out a job description, like, I've started hiring some of them, it would be very difficult to find an individual that can do everything. So, he wants to come in and kind of tweak that, and then try to find the right person to do it. But probably gonna be on a lower scale, because he wants to do, a lot of the, our current town clerk is doing a lot of finance. Wants to move back into finance. So, this accounting operations manager, he's probably gonna look at making that maybe like a assistant finance director position. The stronger can do all the stuff that the center for currently doing. Bring that back in the house, and so he wants to be involved in designing those job descriptions. So, he'll be here in a couple weeks. I just wanted to make you aware of that. And hope that he was, was not approval to change that accounting operations manager. That's something that he'll be looking for. And the third thing I want to talk about tonight is, we, we mentioned that on the budget calendar, there were two additional dates. And we set next Monday night for another meeting. But then we set out to set up the agenda, and there was only one question on there, and that was, of the commission, about the courtroom project. And just wanted to make you aware that, okay, it's already purchased, you know, local storage unit, waiting for completion of the project. Also, there is a line item in the budget for twenty thousand dollars for equipment and upgrades, AOC upgrades. So, just wanted to make you aware of that. So, if there's nothing else to discuss, I'd like to go ahead and cancel that meeting and save our next Monday night. Just let you know that, you know, the budget testing, the budget ordinance will all be prepared by May second. The copy of everything finalized then, and we'll do the budget, we'll do the public hearings. My next meeting after this is May second. Our normal. Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll have that all prepared, and then we'll have it in the office, the public wants to come in and look at it. They'll have an opportunity, the public hearing will be announced. We're probably, in the, the public can come in and look at it.
And all you got to read, that's it. Alright, Hannah Turner? You come over here, hold on. You haven't been by, come here. We're just good, Anthony.
Uh, don't forget, we, our, we're talking about. Last week, Dean and Jack attended our, my transfer passion. If you don't mind, Jack, you've got better notes than I do, would you mind just?
Richard Fabius came to him earlier as well. He come back, through Carpo, Silver City was, ran at a, the city, the city's second avenue, is, probably second avenue quarter, I'm saying. Five Ring Road, much needed during pre-sixty, seventy there, and all tracks of rain going with everything through here. And since then, there's been a little attention given to that quarter of ours, changes of period improvements, and thought it would be something they can look at. On top of that, it was a part of our CTPR conference, efficiently, taking a look at second avenue as a, what else could be done to second avenue, make it more useful to downtown town city. So, from the intersection with Greensboro Avenue, all the way down to the intersection with second and third one, that's the quarter we're talking about. You're gonna, there's a survey out at this time, of that except community to, to have folks fill out. There's a map online, you can, I made comments about certain locations or intersections that you're concerned with. And then tomorrow evening, about thirty here, we'll have what they call projects, opposing public input session, that's a fancy word. Have maps up, there'll be some online polling, it'll also be available on Zoom, you don't have to be here, zoom in with us. But, yeah, and then hopefully, through a couple, maybe opportunities to reach out to public, hear from the public. There'll be some presented to the Board and you. Go, it's a quick turnaround project.
I think, I think those responses will do, on the survey you do tomorrow, correct?
I'm not sure if there's a, that quick for them on the survey. They may, they may steal the last comments, but they're willing to get that stuff in service for the, for the, but it's driven by the, 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 the way it's reported.
As you know, we've had several heavy rains. And today was, Brian. Does anyone ride around to check the ditches?
I do.
It's terrible. Especially over in my area, week from the rain, two rains ago, you have a, you have pipes that was, that are stopped up. And we're having the rain flooding, and just wanting to make sure that the, the, we're riding around to see what needs to be taken care of. And I know that there, there's a shortage of employees, but still, we've got to make sure that, our roads, our ditches, that water is flowing like it should. So, it is not causing flooding in any of the areas. So, that's, that's just one of those things that I, I thought today, definitely, but have seen previously as well. But we, we've just gotta really work on that, to check on that.
Go to the washroom, ladies and gentlemen. And over the, turn down, before you get to Virginia Cross, you got the two little home parks down there. It was just sheeting across the road, yardages, but it wasn't seen containing the trains, did you?
Oh. Me or Chris, whoever on this news, we have events like this, is it, is it feasible or possible, or to have someone ride, take some pictures of the events as they're happening? So, we have a physical corner reminder of what's going on. It is like I want to say, once the event's over, it gets out of sight and out of mind, and stuff up on walls, or something.
Dashing.
Yeah, yeah. Is that new? Thank, ready?
That's important, it's what Ms. Stevens says, not outside and out of mind, it's probably steps you on times. So, it's an issue.
Alright, any other company? I got one. Uh, is, is, town manager, see, is, uh, Jennifer, turn that here with me. I'm tired of looking at that.
I'm trying to write down what I'm saying.
I know. You'll get this. It's already been alluded to, I reckon this will be the last meeting that Jennifer, we are a town clerk in, I think Friday's the last day, I believe. And she'll be moving on to other things, and we'd just like to take the opportunity, on behalf of the town, the town staff, and all the citizens. To tell you thank you for all the things you've done over the years, and all the things you've kept us out of, and kept us from getting into, and everything else. And we wish you the best, and just thank you for what you've done.
Thank y'all very much. And I've already told them that, that put me down for three minutes each month. I'm, I'm still a taxpayer and a voter and a water bill payer, so, and y'all know some of my neighbors, so I'm just gonna join in with them. Nah, I won't be. I thank y'all very much, though, I, I really enjoyed it, so, yeah, it's been nice to see some projects, you know, taking place. And, and I'm sure y'all have an excellent town clerk, and I think you're gonna have a wonderful town manager, that been against Bill, is an interesting. But, but yeah, yeah, I think, great things for Silver City.
Yeah, we appreciate it. So, this kind of builds on what Norma was saying regarding the shortage of employees in, in public works. We've heard a lot about, you know, leaf pickup, brand and water good pickup, water, well, on. Wednesday, I had two citizens talk to me about the traffic in their neighborhood, and the speeding. And they requested, I think it was a reasonable request, just, you know, officer to come by a couple times a week. And I said, I'll, I'll be the chief, and we'll see what you can do. They said, no, we're down eleven in the first part. How many are we down in public works?
Five or six.
Seventeen. And citizen, they both said, with all due respect, that, that's not our problem. We've been hearing this for four years, this same excuse for four years, that's a, that's a yes ma'am, because they're right, they're right. And about a year ago, she brought up an idea of directing budgets, these are recruiting, idea, or categories, you know, working with the local schools, trying to get a recruitment. Pointing down, one year later, we're still, a little like this, on it, we're just sitting there, no one else. But we've got to, we've got to move forward, and any, any ideas outside the box or not, we've got to do something to build up our, our staff again, because. Our, our citizens are suffering. So, I, I'd like to go back and take, take a look at our recruitment program, I'd like to really try to get that off the ground. Okay, just sit here, keep telling Bo, we're short staffed.
You tell them that they could be a program.
No, he, he brought that up, and then there was a separate recruiting program, too.
Yeah, there, there's such as paying for BLT, for, for an advocate, which, you know, that, that, that has a bunch of implications.
Can I speak for that?
Please.
So, Keith and I have spoken about that, he sent the program to me. I have looked at it and investigated it, embedded it. I have even shared it with the new town manager coming on, and I think I've talked with Bill about it as well. And that is one of the things that the new town manager is gonna address early on when he gets here. All the legwork for that has been done, so, once he gets here, and.